Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Delegate Landis. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Good seeing you yesterday.
Let me see.
Hello, everyone. I'm just a citizen.
How you doing, ma'am?
Thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hey, Delegate Turner, how are you?
I'm here. I'm here. I'm just trying to get my sounds and all of that stuff together here. Okay, I got it. And so you all can see me, and I got these glasses. I can't, I can't even see out of these glasses. Hey, man, I gotta do something. Okay, well, I'm glad to be on, and I'll be on. Let me see, let me see if my chair is on here yet. I don't see.
Delegate Turner, hi, Mr. Chair.
Oh, there you are. You underneath me. Boy, I didn't see you, Delegate Fennell. Hi, Delegate Fennell.
How are you, Delegate Fennell?
I'm doing fine. How are you?
I'm doing well, ma'am. Doing well.
Thank you.
I got you.
And I just want to note to everyone, we are live streaming right now, live, so just FYI.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that.
Vice Chair. To be.
Let's see.
And I'm another citizen, and before we start, I just want to say hello to everybody. Thank you for having this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Hope I pronounced that right.
You did. Thank you.
Right. I want to give our colleagues some time to make sure we get folks on, on the call.
Hello, Delegate Ivy. How are you?
Hey there, Delegate Fennell. Nice to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Live from the Fightin' Forty-Seven.
Yes.
Yeah. Forty-two participants right now. Okay. Just want to make sure we have enough of our colleagues here to go ahead and get this ball rolling.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. Let's get the ball rolling. Oh, you're in the office, Nick?
Yeah, I came into the office.
I'm here, too.
Are you here?
I am, because I was, I couldn't make it home in time.
Okay. Yeah, I saw Delegate Williams, Chief of Staff, in our office earlier, so.
Yeah.
Okay, Delegate Harrison, tell them where you really were.
Okay, just as a reminder, we are live streaming right now, everyone.
Okay.
Right. All right, looks like we have enough, enough of our colleagues here. We're going to go ahead and get the meeting started. I want to first start off by saying good evening to everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order for the Prince George's County House Delegation Public Bill Hearing. For the record, today is December fifteenth, 2021, and the time is 6:05 PM. And I am Delegate Nick Charles, Chairman of the Prince George's County House Delegation. I want to first start off by thanking everyone for joining us tonight and participating in this public bill hearing. As my good colleague Delegate Nicole Williams has said to us twice already, we are currently being livestreamed on our delegation YouTube page, and that this meeting will also be recorded and placed onto our YouTube page for future views, so we can make sure everybody has the ability to see this in the future, and you can pass this on to some of your neighbors if they don't have the ability to see it right now. I want to start off also by, by thanking the members of our delegation and the public for taking this time out of your busy schedules to be a part of this. As we move forward, I want to set a few house rules before we start. And so just for the first thing, I just want to let everyone know that this is a bill hearing and it's not a debate on the bills, which will be heard today. The hearing today is purely, purely for clarification to all questions for the bills being heard. So if you have questions, please let those questions be heard when you have your name called. There will be multiple committee hearings in the future when session starts, where the committee will consider each of these bills being heard, and that is when you will be able to have your voices, your opinions, and debate and engage the committee about the merits of the bill, which will be heard today. Our new Legislative Director, Latasha Coleman, will be handling the logistics of the hearing today, bringing people in to testify. Each registered individual will get two minutes to address the bill that they have concerns with, which, after all of the bills, are read off by council. So what that means is we'll go through each, each bill, and that's when the folks will be able to come in and testify on that particular bill. If an individual doesn't respond to their name after it's called twice, that means we can't identify the person, and we will move on to the next person or the next bill. After each bill is heard, we will bring in each individual who was registered to testify, and they'll have that ability to speak on the bill. Today, I just want to let you know, we've only received ten written testimonies, which we will be sending that over to the entire delegation for everyone to have the ability to review before we go into session. The order of events for today will go as follows. As we get started, we will have Delegate Rachel Jones, who will bring prayer. Then we will head into the nomination and voting to fill the vacancy of the second Vice Chair, which was left vacant by Delegate Darryl Barnes. Next, we will have words from our county executive on this year's county priorities. After that, we will go into the by-county bills, which will be led and chaired by our new Vice, our Vice Chair, a newly appointed delegation with delegation, Delegate Andrea Harrison, followed up by County Affairs Committee led by Chair Delegate Diana Fennell. Then we'll head into the Education Committee Bills, led by Chair Susie Proctor. And then we will close out with the Law Enforcement Committee Bills, which is chaired by Delegate Mary Lehman. At this point, I will call on Delegate Rachel Jones for her to bring us into prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Father, we thank you just for all things. We thank you for bringing us through this year's session earlier and also to bring us through special session. I thank you for every single member of this delegation. I thank you, God, for just giving us the ability to pass legislation and make wise choices for the people of Prince George's and the state of Maryland. I ask now that you would rest this hearing, let us all to be open and understanding of the bills at hand and how they will affect the county, and I ask that you would just guide us into making the right decisions. We thank you for all the things, and Jesus name be great.
And amen. Thank you, Delegate Jones. Next, as I stated, we will be opening up nominations to fill the second Vice Chair vacancy. I want to start off by thanking Delegate Darryl Barnes, who, as you all know, is our illustrious Chairman of the Legislative Black Caucus, for his commitment to the county and to the state of Maryland, and also for stepping down and allowing for an opportunity for another one of our delegates to lead in the capacity of moving this county forward. So I want to go ahead and open up nominations.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to select Delegate Nicole Williams as the second Vice Chair to fill the position of vacated by Delegate Darryl Barnes.
A second.
Second. A motion having been moved improperly second to nominate Nicole Williams, we will not move forward with any other nominations. Are there any other nominations? Since there are none, we will close nominations and call for a roll call vote to elect Delegate Nicole Williams as our second Vice Chair of the Prince George's County House Delegation. Roll call.
Benjamin Barnes.
Delegate Darryl Barnes. Delegate Davis. Delegate Fennell.
Aye.
Delegate Fisher.
Aye.
Delegate Harrison.
Aye.
Delegate Healy.
Aye.
Delegate Holmes.
Aye.
Delegate Howe.
Aye.
Delegate Ivy.
Aye.
Delegate Jackson. Delegate Jones.
Aye.
Delegate Landis.
Aye.
Delegate Lehman. Delegate Lewis. Delegate Pina Melnick. Delegate Proctor.
Aye.
Delegate Turner.
Aye.
Delegate Bell Darama.
Delegate Valentina Smith.
Aye.
Delegate Walker. Delegate Washington. Chairman Charles.
All right. Looks like we have the votes for Delegate Nicole Williams as our new second Vice Chair of the Prince George's County House Delegation. Let's offer up congratulations to our good delegate. Congratulations, Nicole. If you want to have a couple of words.
I was just going to say, thanks, everyone. I am looking forward to serving in this role. So thank you so much for your confidence in me.
All right. Thank you, Madam Second Vice. Now, we're going to move on to by-county bills.
Good evening, everyone. This is Delegate Andrea Harrison, Vice Chair of the By-County Committee. And first, we have PGCPG/MC 100-22, the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission Montgomery County, County Committee, County Council, and District Council Voting Thresholds. This is requested by Delegate Carr, and it is for the purpose of adjusting the voting thresholds necessary for the Montgomery County Council or the Montgomery County District Council to take certain actions related to the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission and generally relating to the votes of the Montgomery County Council and the District Council members. I think Delegate Carr is on the line, is, is, and so Delegate Carr, would you like to give more information on this particular piece of legislation that you have introduced?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair and distinguished colleagues. For the record, I'm Al Carr, here to present PGMC 100-22. This bill simply updates the references in the state code to account for an eleven-member County Council in Montgomery County. The voters of Montgomery County approved that change, so we are transitioning right now from a nine-member County Council to an eleven-member County Council that will start next term. And this bill simply implements that, and I ask for your favorable report.
Thank you, Delegate Carr. Are there any questions related to this piece of legislation? I don't think there are any, so we'll move on to our next piece of legislation. That is PGMC 101-22. This is Montgomery County Planning Board Open Meetings, Video and Audio Streaming and Minutes. This is also presented by Delegate Carr, and this is for the purpose of requiring the Montgomery County Planning Board to stream live video or teleconference audio or other audio of the open meetings of the board and prepare minutes of each open meeting, requiring the board to maintain on its website complete and unedited archived recordings of live-streamed open meetings and the minutes of its open meetings, providing that the inability of the board to comply with the live-streaming requirements due to technical issues does not affect the validity of the actions taken by the board at an open meeting and generally relating to the meetings, I'm sorry, generally relating to meetings of the Montgomery County Planning Board. Delegate Carr?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Al Carr, here to present PGMC 101-22. Though this is a by-county bill, which applies to the Montgomery County Planning Board, and it requires them to stream their open meetings and also to provide written minutes. Of course, they're already streaming their meetings, so it codifies their current practice and establishes some parameters. It's patterned after a bill that passed the General Assembly unanimously last year, and I think both delegations unanimously, that applied to WSSC for streaming their open meetings. And I ask for your favorable report.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the members of the delegation?
Delegate Harrison.
Yes.
The county exec is in, she was in the waiting room, and so we were able to let her in. And so we're going to pause right now on the bills, and then we're going to welcome our amazing county executive, Angela Alsobrooks, as she brings greetings and as she also comes to discuss the county priorities as we go into this legislative session. Everybody, please give a round of applause and welcome to our county executive, Angela Alsobrooks.
Well, thank you so much to Chair Charles and all of the respective leaders who are on this call tonight, as well as those in our community. I just wanted to say thank you so much, first of all, for having me here in the, in this virtual space. The fact that we are meeting virtually tells us that we are still battling a global pandemic, but I just have to say very quickly a thank you to all of our community members who have shown up not only tonight, but you have shown up in amazing ways for our community over the last twenty-one months, and I am so grateful to all of you for the love and commitment you've shown to each other in helping us to get this pandemic behind us. I also just want to say to our delegation, to both the House and Senate, how grateful we are for the collaboration that we have shared that has helped us to continue to serve our residents in spite of all that we have faced, and to say how excited I am for the opportunity that will be before us in 2022 to bring back big resources to Prince George's County. I think we all understand that those who are in power have the opportunity to decide where resources go, and I have to say that we are very, very fortunate to have those representing us in Annapolis who have experience and who have knowledge and commitment, and we are certainly looking forward to all that they will bring back to us. We're also grateful for all of our residents who have joined us tonight to tell us what your priorities are and to weigh in on the priorities we've established. I will just very quickly outline for you a few of the priorities that we have as a government, and you will be able to tell that those priorities are in line with our desire to not only get back to where we were prior to the pandemic, but it is our desire to move us even further and to focus in a few areas. One is on the most important, I believe, feature we have, the most important priority any of us has, is to invest in the people who live in our county. And so we often talk about economic development, and I'm going to talk very quickly about some of the legislation that we believe will advance our economic development goals. But we recognize as well that the most important goal we have is human development, and so we want to make sure that we're pouring in both the economic development, but most importantly, into human development, meaning that we are focusing on the health of our residents. Speaking of health, one of the priorities that we have going into Annapolis is to continue to build the resources and to build the availability of health care in Prince George's County. You all know that we were fortunate to cut a ribbon on a brand-new facility here in Largo, Maryland, and we recognize that there is an opportunity to further the health care that is available to Prince Georgians by pushing to have a cancer center added to the hospital that was, was open in June. This delegation is aware of this goal, for us to go forward and to seek in the neighborhood of sixty-seven million dollars, which we believe will be necessary to build a cancer center onto the hospital facility and thereby be able to provide that kind of care to our residents right here at home. We don't want our residents to continue to feel the need to go out of Prince George's County to get the care that they need, the cancer care that they need, but to be able to get it here at home, and so we're, that is one of our priorities. We will also be introducing a bill to ensure that we're able to conduct a number of assessments and studies on our current, on the new hospital, to find the ways that we can maximize the care that is provided there and to, to look at ways that we can increase efficiencies. You hear that even though we have a new facility, the care that is provided inside that facility is extremely important to all of us, and so we'll be pushing to make sure that we continue to improve the delivery of care as well as to eventually look at expanding the capacity of that hospital. As you all have recognized very well that we built a hospital that is serving the second-largest jurisdiction in the state of Maryland. We know from the last census count that Prince George's County is the fastest-growing population in the state, and so we're going to need a facility that is large enough to care for Prince Georgians. We are right now operating at ninety-eight percent capacity in our brand-new facility, and so we're going to need to, to look at ways that we can bring resources here to, to further that capacity. Speaking of health, you all may be aware, if not, I wanted to share with you that this delegation pushed legislation in Annapolis this past legislative session to be able to expand the offering of grocery stores in Prince George's County, to be able to, to close the gap where healthy foods are concerned. Prince George's County unfortunately has the designation of having the largest concentration of food deserts, low-income, low-access areas in the region. You all recognize that over fifty-five percent of the establishments here that provide food or fast food, and that we have ninety-two grocers and a hundred and thirty-two liquor stores. You know, that means that we have two liquor stores per square mile in Prince George's County, and we believe that there is an opportunity for us to look very carefully at some of the low-income, low-access areas and to, with precision, decide whether to offer a beer and wine license to be able to attract grocers to, to our, to underserved areas. Let me explain why that's important. Grocery stores do not come to areas, I hear our residents say all the time, that they desire to have Trader Joe's. They wonder why we have One Whole Food. They want to be able to expand the offering of grocery stores in our county. But what we know is that in spite of us having the designation of having a large swath of food deserts, those businesses do not come to us out of the goodness of their heart. Instead, they come when they can earn money. What we know is that the profit margin for grocery stores is between two and three percent. That's a very narrow profit margin. And so in order to make the business case, to be able to attract grocers to Prince George's County, one tool that we would like to add to our toolbox is to be able to have a license. These licenses exist in Virginia. The licenses exist in, in the District of Columbia, and we would like to have the, the opportunity to have that tool in our toolbox to offer a beer and wine license to some of the grocers that we would like to attract to some of our more challenged areas, to be able to convince them to, to bring their business to us and offer that, that food. And so this delegation will be back in Annapolis, working toward that, and I just thank them. It is, it's a heavy lift, but it is one that is necessary, and so I want to thank them in advance for that. We will likewise be working to offer an opportunity to expand health, sports for our young people in the county. There will be some legislation to be able to open up the fields in Prince George's County for non-school use, and what that means is that we play a number of home games, and we play those games in places that are not at home. And so this initiative, the initiative we're putting forward is the Non-School Use of Public School Facilities Initiative that will create a centralized booking system to ensure fairness and equity in the use of county field. Sorry, fields. And what this means is that our teams have more access to fields in Prince George's County. I hear all the time from many of the teams that compete that they do not have equitable use of fields, and so legislation will make our sports fields more equitable, giving all of our residents the ability to play home games here in the county. And so that is also one of our legislative priorities. There will be others in the way of providing the adult registry, vulnerable adult registry, to make sure that you do not have an opportunity to abuse a senior at a facility and then just travel around the county and continue to do so. So that will be there as well, as well as economic development, making sure that we have the additional funding that will be necessary to complete the amphitheater that we are intending to build here, the next two to four million dollars for that, as well as additional dollars for the Equestrian Center, which you all may know that has now won the award to host the Washington International Horse Show, which is a very prestigious show, and to provide some needed adjustments to the, to the Showplace Arena, as well as to continue to make investments along the Blue Line Corridor, along also Route Five. So there are some infrastructure and transportation investments that we will be seeking as well. So there are many other priorities I can discuss with you, but I was not invited to speak all night long. So instead, I would just say to you that we thank you for your engagement, that we want to provide assurances that we will continue to work together. We know that as long as we row in the same direction and row with the same purpose, and the only purpose we have to be in Annapolis is to carry out the people's agenda. We know that agenda is to invest in education, health care, to invest also in the opportunity to grow jobs and grow our economy, as well as to, to bring back just valuable resources to continue to invest in Prince George's County families. So thank you to this delegation. They are super bad and amazing. They work together especially well. They, they mean business when they go to Annapolis, and I want to thank the leaders. Thank you, Chair Charles. Thank also to Senator Benson, who I'm not sure, I believe is probably on here as well, and thank you to this community also for, for continuing to stay engaged and for holding us accountable. So thank you all so much. God bless you all over the holidays. My wish from my family to yours also is that you will have a safe and healthy holiday season. So thank you, Chair Charles.
Thank you, Madam County Executive. I think you, you've laid it all out, and I think the people will be grateful once we all come together and we make this happen for our folks. But we're going to go right back into our by-county bills as we tell you goodbye, and we'll be seeing you later, and I know we'll be meeting a lot more as session comes forward. And now I'm going to open it back up to Delegate Andrea Harrison, the Vice Chair for By-County Committee. Delegate Harrison?
Thank you. Thank you, County Executive Alsobrooks. We do appreciate and we love working with you, and we will see what we can do to help, to help you to advance the county's priorities and agenda. So I'm going to move on to PGCPG/MC 103-22, By-County Commission's Ethics Certification of Compliance. This is also submitted by Delegate Carr from Montgomery County, and this is for the purpose of requiring each By-County Commission to certify to the Ethics Commission that the By-County Commission is in compliance with the requirements relating to conflict of interest, financial disclosure, and lobbying, and generally relating to By-County Commissions and Ethics. Delegate Carr, would you like to add to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Al Carr with PGMC 103-22. This by-county bill is to strengthen, designed to strengthen the ethics regulations and practices of our three by-county agencies, WSSC, MNCPC, and WSTC, make them more consistent with existing law. So under the bill, each by-county agency will be required to annually certify to the State Ethics Commission that their ethics regulations are similar or substantially similar to state ethics regulations. So let me give you two examples of why the bill is needed. So all three of our by-county agencies are already required under current law to have lobbying regulations that are similar to state lobbying regulations. And WSSC has very strong and robust, robust lobbying regulations, while MNCPCC does not. And I know they're in the process of updating those. And then a second example has to do with financial disclosure forms. The Bye County Agencies are already required to have their financial disclosure process be substantially similar to the state. And MNCPC uses the state's financial disclosure form, the same form we all fill out. So they're in compliance, but WSSC's form was actually missing a section until that was pointed out to them. So the point of this bill is to make those corrections more automatic. You shouldn't have to take a citizen or legislator to notice something missing. It should just happen automatically. That's what happens with our counties and municipalities every year that they certify. So this would apply that same standard to the Bye County Agencies. So thank you very much, and I ask for your favorable report.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the delegation? Delegate Carr. All right. PG CMC one oh five dash twenty two, Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, Minority Business Enterprise Utilization Program Determination Extension. This is requested by the WSSC. And it is for the purpose of continuing until a certain date provisions relating to procurement for minority business enterprises by the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission and generally relating to the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission. I think we have Guy Andes on the line who represents WSSD. So I would invite him to speak in more detail on this.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Guy Andes, Government Affairs Manager for WSSC Water. As the Chair explained, this, the proposed legislation will extend the statutory authority for the WSSC Minority Business Enterprise Utilization Program, or also known as the MBE Program, for a period of one year ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Currently, the the current authority to conduct this program sunsets on July first, twenty twenty-two. We are in the process of completing our disparity study, which was supposed to be completed in twenty twenty. And we would have came forth with a bill to extend the program for five years. Due to the pandemic, our contractor who's performing the disparity study has been had complications obtaining the requisite submissions from our contractors in order to complete the disparity study, which they believe will be completed in March, or I'm sorry, in the spring of twenty twenty-two. That's why we're here to ask for a one-year extension versus five years. And if that study does substantiate the continuation of the program, we will be submitting legislation next year to extend it for five years going forward. We ask for a favorable report, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Andes. Are there any questions from the delegation from Mr. Andes on this particular bill? Seeing none, moving on to PG MC one oh six dash twenty-two. The Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission Hiring Promotion Preferences Veterans and Their Spouses. And this is submitted by the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, WSSC. And it is for the purpose of authorizing the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission to grant a preference and hiring and promotion to certain veterans, spouses of certain veterans, and surviving spouses of certain veterans, providing that granting a preference under this act does not violate state or local equal employment opportunity laws and generally relating to hiring and promotion preferences for veterans and their spouses. Mr. Andes, I invite you to expound.
Yes, again, Guy Andes, Government Affairs Manager for WSSC Water, here on, here in support of PG MC one oh nine twenty, no, one oh six twenty-two, I'm sorry. This this bill will repeal the current WSSC statute pertaining to competitive selection processes for appointments of veterans and adoptive processes utilized by the state of Maryland. Under current law, in order for a honorably discharged veteran to receive preference, he or she must have been honorably discharged from the from the U.S. Armed Forces and had been a bona fide resident of the state when that person entered the United States Armed Forces in order to receive that credit. This bill will repeal that and adopt that of the the processes utilized by the state and will also allow us to grant this preference to the spouse of an eligible veteran who has a service-connected disability or the surviving spouse of a deceased eligible veteran. We ask for your support for this bill, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I think the Chair may have froze, or I'm frozen.
Delegate Charles.
Delegate Williams as Second Vice. Do you want to, or who's first, second? You want to step in?
Julian is, is Julian still here? Okay, I guess.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Nicole.
Okay, go ahead, Delegate Holmes.
Thank you so much. I would ask Mr. Andes to look at and review some of the veteran preferences. And I'm not sure my comment is referencing one oh six dash twenty-two or one oh five dash twenty-two. I'm suggesting that you might want to look at procurement processes for veterans and see if there is a preference or in procurement of WSSC contracts for veterans. And again, I'm not sure if that's one oh six dash twenty-two or one oh five. That's my only comment. Thank you very much.
I thank you, Delegate Holmes. I'll I'll bring that back to our procurement and our MBE Director or OSDI Director.
The next hand that I thought I saw was Delegate Healy.
Yes, but I did, I did, Madam Chair, I did actually listen to Delegate Holmes' question. And I think I will wait until we have the work sessions to to take this up in more detail. Thank you.
You. Are there any other questions for Mr. Andes? Nope. Okay, I guess we'll just move on to the next bill then.
Are you there, Nicole or Delegate?
Yes, I'm here. So that was from Mr. Andes. I'm sorry, is Natasha, was there anyone else signed up to testify on this bill? I apologize before we move on to the next one. She's not there.
It's Delegate.
Next bill, Madam Chair, is one oh, is one oh nine.
Delegate, Delegate Williams, it appears that those that were in the House Office Building are off. So something might have happened in the House Office Building.
Because, okay, it does appear that way. All right, well, that's unfortunate. All right, well, then I will, I have the list in front of me of the bill. So we'll move on to PG slash MC one oh nine dash two-two. This is also a WSSC bill. Also, I don't know if Mr. Andes, you're here to also testify on behalf of this bill?
I am, and I can present it if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay. Good afternoon, good evening again. Guy Andes, Government Affairs Manager for WSSC Water, here to present PG MC one oh nine twenty-two. The proposed legislation will grant WSSC Water the authority to impose a penalty not exceeding five thousand dollars for each violation to persons who violate provisions of the WSSC Water Fuel Plumbing and Fuel Gas Code. This would bring us into parity with the State Plumbing Board as current law right now only allows, we have a progressive fine schedule that starts at two hundred and fifty dollars per violation and goes up to one thousand dollars per violation for the fourth offense. So again, as a Bye County State Agency, we are asking your support for PG MC one oh nine twenty-two to allow us to have parity with the enforcement mechanisms that the state of the State Plumbing Board has. I ask for your support and here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Andes. Does anyone have any questions for him? If there are no questions for Mr. Andes, and is there anyone else here to testify on this bill? Nope. Okay, then we will move on to PG slash MC one oh five dash two-two. And pull that scroll up here, excuse me.
We did one oh five two-two.
Yeah, that was the minority enterprise. Okay, so the next one I have is PG C, PG slash MC dash one oh six two-two, which is.
We did.
One, one.
We're on one eleven.
Yeah, one eleven.
Okay, all right, so PG slash MC one eleven dash two-two, sorry. WSSC, oh, sorry, Washington Suburban Transit Commission. I believe this is being sponsored by Delegate Mark Corman.
I think it's Delegate Solomon.
Okay.
Delegate Williams, Delegate Corman and I have worked together on it, but it's officially officially under my name.
Okay. All right, well, you can take it away there, Delegate Solomon.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, it's good to see you tonight. I will be very brief, and yeah, it's unusual to see a bill that has anything to do with WAMADA that does not have Delegate Corman's name on it. But he and I worked together on this. He and he felt it was better as a delegation chair not to put it in under his name. It's a very simple bill. Basically, if you are appointed to the Washington Suburban Transit Commission, there are eight-year term limits. It's a two-year term, or I'm sorry, a two-term for four years. And each county executive in Montgomery and Prince George gets to appoint two members. Those members are then approved by by the council before they're they're seated. We ran into a situation this year where because of term limits, somebody who had been serving as the voting member on WAMADA, so if you're on the WSTC, you are also, you can also be selected to be the voting member on WAMADA's board, was not able to be reappointed by our county executive because he had already served as the voting member, and our county executive wanted to reappoint him as essentially the alternate. Our county executive supports this legislation. And I just heard a short while ago that the WSTC Board voted to approve it, pending potential amendments to include the same benefit to, or the same change to the individuals appointed by the Prince George's County Executive. No problem in supporting that. We view that as a favorable amendment, so we'll we'll leave it to to your delegation to make that decision. The one point I would make in closing is just that, you know, in terms of good governance, you know, we believe there really don't need to be this this oversight because the county councils already get to approve the appointees. So this is just really making sure that folks who have expertise and experience and the appointments are agreed to by the county executives and the county councils are able to to remain on the board and continue to serve. So with that, I would I would ask a favorable report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You, and I see Delegate Charles is back with us, so I will turn this back over to our illustrious Chair.
Thank you so much for for taking over for, as soon as you get into the role of Second Vice, you already have work to do. You know, sorry, everyone, something happened over here in Annapolis. All of our computers, we all lost internet here within the State House. So please bear with us. Delegate Williams, please.
Yes.
Stay vigilant if this happens again. We're all using our cell phones right now for Wi-Fi within the State House, so.
Mr. Chair, we were just wrapping up eleven dash two-two. I don't know if any of our colleagues have questions on that before we move on to the next one.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I hear that there are no questions. We are going to move forward with County Affairs. And Delegate Diana Fennell is the Chairman for County Affairs. And Delegate Fennell, I'll open the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to say congratulations to Second Vice Chair, who just did a phenomenal job hanging in there. Great job. I want to go to County Affairs Affairs four oh two dash twenty-two. Prince George's County Municipal Tax Setoff School Facility Surcharge and Public Safety Behavior Health Surcharge Reports. This was requested by the County Executive on behalf and the Chair, the Chair, Mr. Chair put it in. In the bill, language is for purpose of altering the date by which the governing body of Prince George's County is required to complete a certain report concerning the county's municipal tax setup. Altering the date by which the County Executive of Prince George's County is required to prepare an annual report on certain school facility surcharge and certain public safety and behavioral health surcharge and generally relating to municipal tax setup, the school facility surcharge, and the public safety and eleven behavioral health surcharge in Prince George's County. This is, Mr. Chair, you want to expand on it? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Madam Chair. No, there is nothing to expand. We do have the county execs team on the call if they would like to add anything to the bill. We'll open the floor to the county executive staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Charles. Ron Young with the County Execs Office. And so hopefully the bill is pretty straightforward here. And these date change bills allow the county to align more correctly with the data in terms of when it comes into the county. That way, when we get the reports in, it aligns with other dates that we have currently for similar types of reports. And so hopefully just shifting these dates allow the county to provide a more comprehensive report when we do these annual report outs for the public safety surcharges.
Thank you. Is there any questions from delegation? Is there any questions from the delegation? If not, I'm going to move on to our call three dash twenty-two. This is Prince George's County Corporate Housing Corporation, Condominiums and Homeowners Association Reserve Studies. This is requested by Delegate Holmes. The bill language is for the purpose of altering language relating to requirements for reserve studies for corporate housing corporations, condominiums, and homeowners association in Prince George's County to be consistent with the corresponding requirements in Montgomery County and generally relating to reserve studies of corporate housing, corporation, condominiums, and homeowners association in Prince George's County. Delegate Holmes, did you want to expand on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this bill. All of you who are here for more than six years know that I have had a reserve study bill presented within the General Assembly for the past five or six years. The reason why this particular bill is before us is because when I had my statewide reserve study bills, they passed the House but were not passed in the Senate. Because of that, Montgomery County then initiated their own reserve study bill. And there were some changes made to the Montgomery County Reserve Study Bill that I want to include into the Prince George's County Reserve Study Bill this year. Specifically, the changes that Montgomery County adopted that I want to put into the Prince George's County Bill include the updated study for reserve studies every five years because updated studies are less expensive than the initial reserve studies. That is what the bill says currently. However, Madam Chair, if I may continue, some of you may know that I have had Task Force for Common Ownership Community Interest Meetings every single week since June. And one of the recommendations, recommendations that has come out of that reserves, out of my task force is that we allow phase-in. Some of the persons, some of the board members in Prince George's County have been suggesting that a phase-in should be required. So I am going to be changing the Prince George's County Bill to allow a phase-in of these reserve studies. I am also going to be revising the statewide reserve study bill to allow phase-ins. I'm also going to be reaching out to Delegate Crutchfield in Montgomery County to allow phase-ins as well. The phase-ins were something that's requested by multiple boards of directors throughout the community, throughout the state, and we're going to try to put that into legislation this coming year. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will take any questions anyone has.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Delegate Holmes, from the delegation? If not, Mr. Chair.
Delegate Fennell.
Yes.
Yes, uh, two, two things. I just want to address this real quick. So when we, when the, uh, internet went out over here at the State House, uh, it went out on, uh, by county bill one oh seven dash twenty-two, Montgomery County Land Use Document Certification for Kramer. We're going to get through your section, but I just want to let, uh, Delegate Harrison know we're going to come right back to her to finish off that last bill, and then, uh, we'll move on to education. But, uh, we're going to re-refer, I had to re-refer one of the bills. Uh, if the delegates look in the packet that I provided to them, uh, under the education section for Prince George's County vacancies for the Central Committee vote, that is being re-referred to county affairs. Uh, so I'm going to pass that on to Delegate Fennell to handle, uh, that section, and then we will go back to Bye County to finish the last bill that was cut out, uh, due to the internet outage, and then we'll go into education. Uh, Delegate Fennell, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as stated, the bill is five oh two dash twenty-two, Prince George's County Vacancies Central Committee Vote. Um, this is the requested person was Delegate Davis. Uh, the bill language is for the purpose of requiring in Prince George's County that only the members of the appropriate political party, uh, Central Committee who resides in the district when a General Assembly vacancy occurs may vote on the submission to the governor of the name of the residents of the district to fill the vacancy. Delegate Davis is not here, as you know, he's moved on as treasurer. Um, I do believe that we have one person that signed up, um, to testify, and I think that's Richard Elliott. Is he in the room?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, how you doing, Ms. Elliott? Go ahead.
I'm doing well. Thank you, Delegate Fennell. Uh, my comments will be quick and just informational. Uh, I do find this concept interesting as it's what's done, for example, in Baltimore City and several other parts of the state during a, uh, during a vacancy filling. Uh, a question I would have is, A, would this, uh, emphasize some kind of expansion of the Central Committee from rather from having two or perhaps three members in one district or having four, five, six, or perhaps even seven, as is the case in Baltimore City? And also to state the opinion that the Prince George's County Democrats have expressed in the past that vacancies should be filled by special elections. Those are my only comments. Thank you very much, Delegate Fennell.
You're welcome, Ms. Elliott. Um, is there any questions from the delegation? Having none. Uh, thank you, and I turn it back over to the Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
I, I, I think that, uh, Delegate.
I couldn't hear you, Delegate Holmes. Uh, go ahead, Delegate Landis.
Um, I don't know when the appropriate time for this is, but, um, and I have not seen the, the, the full text of the language. Um, but beginning with, uh, the twenty, in the twenty twenty-two elections, the, the, the makeup in terms of the number of Central Committee members for each legislative district, they will change because of the non-binary, uh, requirement that Central Committees were required to go through. So, for example, in Prince George's County, each legislative district will have, um, four Central Committee members, one at large and three regular. Uh, and this will take place in the June twenty twenty-two primary. So the question that I, the, the concern that I have is that if this piece of legislation goes through, I think consideration needs to be given to the fact that, uh, what will happen if there is a tie? Who will break the tie? So, I mean, that's just a concern that I have, and, and I'll have a conversation with, um, whomever to, to kind of flush that out.
Thank you, Delegate.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, all right. Thank you, uh, Delegate Fennell. Thank you, Delegate Landis, for, for your question. Uh, we will definitely, uh, reach out to Delegate Davis to get a better understanding of what he wanted to do prior to leaving, and if he's going to keep the bill, pull the bill, and move forward. So we'll, we will work with that, uh, and, and figure out where to go from there. I'm checking to see if Delegate Andrea Harrison, uh, was able to get back on. As you saw in the background, she came into my office. Uh, and I know she was going to try to, uh, utilize her phone.
I'm here.
Okay, there she goes.
All right. I'm sorry. Um, so we left off, we did the PGCMC one oh seven twenty-two, um, which was the land use documents, and, um, I was calling on, um, Delegate Holmes because he had a question. This bill was submitted by Delegate Kramer. Um, and, um, you know what? Actually, I think his question was related to, I'm sorry, his question was, it, it, this was PG C, PGMC, excuse me, one oh six twenty-two. The hiring and promotion preferences for veterans and their spouses. And so, um, did Delegate Holmes ask his question and get an answer?
My question has been asked and will be considered later, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then we are now on PGMC one oh seven twenty-two, the land use documents, and this was submitted by Delegate Kramer, and it was for the purpose of requiring certain land use regulations applicable to Montgomery County to require that an applicant sign a certificate for, uh, certain documents submitted to the county planning board, and generally relating to the certification of certain land use documents of Montgomery County. And so, do we have Delegate Kramer on the line? I'm not sure.
I didn't see his name, uh, in the list, uh, as anybody here, so. So we can move on.
I don't know if he has staff or anyone to speak on this. No? Okay, well, that, that one has been read, and, um.
And all the other bills have been done, uh, uh, four oh two twenty-two, and, I'm sorry, yeah, all of the Bye County bills are complete.
Okay.
Thank, Delegate, uh, Nicole Wade's finished.
Okay, one oh nine twenty-two and one eleven twenty-two have both been completed.
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Delegate Harrison, and, uh, once again, thank you, everyone, for bearing with us on the, uh, technical difficulties we're having over here at the State House. And, uh, we're now going to move forward, uh, with the Education Committee, which is chaired by Delegate Suzie Proctor. Uh, Delegate Proctor, the floor is now yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as you stated, my name is Suzie Proctor, and I am chairing the Education Committee. We would begin tonight with PG five oh three twenty-two. Uh, Prince George's County Task Force on the Membership and Operation of the Prince George's County Board of Education. This is sponsored by Pina Melney, but I do believe Delegate Valentino Smith will be available if there are questions. Is counsel available to read the bill language?
Uh, yes, Delegate, uh, I'm here.
Okay.
Uh, for the record, chamber counsel of the full delegation, um, this bill, as mentioned, is, uh, Prince George's County Task Force on the Membership and Operation of Prince George's County Board of Education, PG five oh three twenty-two. Um, the bill summary would be that for the purpose of establishing the task force on the membership and operation of the Prince George's County Board of Education, and generally relating to the task force on the membership and operation of the Prince George's County Board of Education.
Is there anyone in the delegation that has a question at this point? Delegate Valentino Smith, would, is there anything you would like to add to this?
Oh, no, thank you, Madam Chair. I think staff wrote a good, um, description of the bill, and, and to let those, um, listening know that, uh, Delegate Pina Melnick had to be in, in a healthcare conference. That's why she's not here, but that, um, we've been working on this as just an opportunity for there to be a very objective review and organization of people to come together and talk about how we can continue to make our very important school system the best that it can be.
Thank you very much. I can't see, um, do we have anyone else with a question related to five oh three?
Madam, Madam Chair, you had, uh, four individuals who signed up, uh, for testimony. Uh, and we'll start it off with David Kahn. Then we will go to Jana Parker. Then we will go to Richard Elliott. And then we will go and, uh, please excuse me if I mispronounced the name. Uh, so Tricia, uh, Balachandran. And, uh, charge it to my head and not to my heart if I mispronounced it. Uh, but we'll open it up for David Kahn first.
Thank you. On behalf of citizens for an elected board of which I serve as, uh, co-chair, uh, we request that this bill be withdrawn or failing that, that it be reported negatively. It's entirely unnecessary. Uh, for the last twenty years, we've gone back and forth from one type of, um, uh, structure for the school board to another. We have lots of experience. We had an all-elected board, and we had an all-appointed board, then an all-elected board, now a hybrid board. And I might, uh, point out that in two thousand thirteen, for those delegates, uh, who are newer, that, uh, Delegate Valentino Smith had a similar bill that was hijacked by then-county executive Resheren Baker and gave us this terrible hybrid structure that we have now that has just, uh, caused so much dissension, infighting, pettiness, and, uh, is entirely unworkable. Studies have shown that changing the governance of our schools, of any schools anywhere in the country, has not resulted in changes in student performance, which we all would like to see improved. The only difference is who's calling the shots, whether it's people elected directly for educational purposes by the members of their districts, or whether it's people who are appointed by politicians to serve both educational and also political ends. We, of course, favor democracy, direct democracy, for election of school board members directly from nine single-member districts with vacancies being filled by special election. Uh, Delegate Ivy had a bill to do that in the last session. I'm sorry it wasn't acted on. I hope that we will have a bill in this session to do that. But all this bill that's before you today will do is kick the can further down the road. The time has come to act. The time has come to give us back our school board and, uh, let the people of this county determine who will set educational property for the schools. Again, I hope it will be withdrawn. If not, please, uh, report it out unfavorably. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Who was the second name?
Jana Parker. Good evening.
Please, go ahead.
Much. Uh, I just have a couple of comments, and I'll be as brief as possible. Um, I just want to really emphasize that for the past several years since the school board has been hybrid, the citizens of Prince George's County have continuously, continuously asked for the school board to be returned to being fully elected, continuously. So if this bill is somehow going to move towards having a fully elected board, then I'm in full support because that's what the citizens of Prince George's County has said over and over and over again. And I also would like to highlight that that's what several campaign promises were, 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 were put in. People were saying when they were running for county executive and for delegate and for senator, you know, we understand that there are all these issues, and we understand that the county wants, the, the citizens of Prince George's County wanted to return to a fully elected board, and we're going to do that. Now y'all are in office. I'm looking at you on the screen. You look beautiful tonight. Thank you. But I still don't see a fully elected school board, like you promised. I still don't see a fully elected school board, like people were saying in their debate promises, like in their campaign promises. So if this bill moves us closer to the autonomy of putting this back in the hands of the citizens, then I'm all for it. But if it's not going to do that, then I, I'm not in support of it. And what I will also state is that if the citizens and residents of Prince George's County are capable enough to elect you to represent us, then we're capable enough to elect the people who represent us on the school board. And the fact that this has still been hijacked from us, essentially by y'all, and hasn't been turned back over, is very, very, very frustrating. Because you come and you knock on our doors and you want our votes, but then we tell you exactly what we want to see, and you don't do it. So at the end of the day, I'm going to make sure that it's on record. Every point in time you guys talk about education, the citizens of Prince George's County have asked you to return the school board to being a fully elected board throughout all districts. Please do so. Thank you so much. Y'all look nice tonight. Look real cute.
Thank you very much, Ms. Parker. Um, the third person, Delegate Charles on your list?
It is, uh, Richard Elliott.
Yeah, thank you, Charles. Thank you, Delegate Proctor. Uh, I just want to echo, uh, Jana, Jana's statements. Uh, people in the community and our organization, Prince George's County, Democrats have routinely, consistently argued for the election of our school board members. I do believe that this, uh, that this task force has the opportunity to at least bring people to the table, have discussion about perhaps how some other things can be done within the process. But in short, uh, we will accept probably, we will accept nothing less than having elected board members. Thank you. Uh, I'll comment later.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. And the last person? Delegate Charles, folks.
Yeah. Oh. Um, that's me, Suchitra Balachandran, with our revolution, Prince George's. Um, I was there ten years ago when HB eleven oh seven in twenty thirteen, a bill, a task, a bill, a task force bill to look into what was wrong with our school board system was put in, was passed by the House with an overwhelming majority, and then was completely gutted in the Senate to create this board that we now have, the hybrid board, that we are all wondering why it's not working, and you are now creating a task force once again. So excuse me if I have no faith in, in, in this system, in what you are doing, if, with your intentions, because I think this is really not, um, what you did ten years ago. What you did was terrible. It was a, it was, uh, it was egregious. It was, uh, um, I mean, you broke the faith of the people who were watching you, um, enact legislation when you took this bill every time. I, I mean, I urge you all to go and take a look at the enrolled bill, HB eleven oh seven twenty thirteen, where you will see that nothing remains of the original bill that passed the House with the exception of the number of the bill. Everything else was changed in the Senate. A completely gutted bill was produced, passed, and ran through the House. And while the majority of the Prince George's delegation voted for that gutted bill, there were other people in other jurisdictions who opposed it, who had passed it the first time around. So it was, it didn't go unnoticed. And now to come back and say that it's, the, the language is identical. The same people are going to look at this again and find out what's wrong. If you didn't find out what was wrong then, you're not going to find out what's wrong now. So if you really want to find out what's wrong and why these various systems of boards have not worked in Prince George's, as you claim they have not, then I urge you to get an independent task force, some, something that has nothing to do with the legislature or the people whom we have elected into office, and then ask them what is wrong. And I think what is wrong is this is a huge budget. It's a two billion dollar budget, and too many people are poking their fingers in to see what they can do, uh, to, you know, to, to move this, this, the system and this, you know, the, the administration of the school system one way or the other. And, and, and that is the problem. It is not, I mean, if you think we don't get good quality people elected into the school board, well, we have, we, we are the same, as Jana said, we are the same people who elect all of you into office. So please don't tell us we're not capable of electing a school board into office. We're perfectly capable of electing a school board into office. We need to go back to fully elected board, and we need every other elected official who's elected to, to work on other issues and hold other positions, to please keep their fingers off the school board, the school board and to let them function independently in a way that they are capable of doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did we have anyone else signed up to speak on PG 503? Thank you very much. We'll move on to PG 505.
I'm, I'm a citizen. My name is Terry Nury Dean. I had sent comments and I wanted to submit comments on this. May I be have permission to speak?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I wanted to know the impact of this bill on our current elected officials. My family is concerned about the ongoing efforts to eliminate voters' choice of elected officials by other elected officials, such as was given in the Prince George's County Executive Order 24021, which appears to represent ongoing efforts to undermine the citizens' choice of duly elected school board officials. My family supported the bill last year, HB 0624, because we believed its intent restored the dignity of the individual who aspires to participate in one's school district affairs as a citizen or as an elected official. We reasoned that elected public officials could best serve the 134,000 students and their families by district on a local level with a personal touch because the respective constituency can better inspire or pressure their local leaders to address the concerns. My family does not want the Prince Georgeian educational organism to die. Elected officials in one sphere trying to remove voters' elective choices in another sphere through pretextual and other manipulative strategies misaligns with representative democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to PG 50522, Prince George's County non-school use of public school facilities. This bill is sponsored from the executives, county executives office. Is council prepared to, to read the language of the bill?
Yes, Madam Chair. This bill is for the purpose of authorizing in Prince George's County the non-school use of public school facilities for public and community purposes and the manner by which certain costs are apportioned to be regulated by the local law consistent with certain use criteria and not inconsistent with other provisions of law. It also authorizes a local law to provide for an inter-agency coordinating board. It requires the members of an inter-agency coordinating board to be appointed by Prince, the Prince George's County, County Executive and confirmed by the Prince George's County Council, excuse me, County Council in accordance with local law, and it generally relates to the non-school use of public school facilities in the county.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I think we have a representative from the county exec's office, would you like to say a few words relative to 50522?
Hi Delegate. Again, this is Ron Young with the Prince George's County Executive's Office. Like the county executive mentioned at the top of this meeting, this bill is really to make sure that we have home teams here in the county that can play their home games here. It's to coordinate all the efforts of our fields across the county to make sure that, you know, whether they're in use by the school or park and planning or some of the other groups here, that we have some coordinated effort amongst all the agencies that, you know, look over our fields to make sure that, that the home teams can play here at home. And then the board would be created to make sure that all those partners are at the table and to get a consistent schedule. That way the teams can plan ahead in terms of where they're going to play their games, to make sure the kids in their community, if you have a field down the street, to make sure that you can play at that field and you don't have to, you know, bus or travel miles away to be able to engage in recreation activities.
Thank you very much. Does anyone on the delegation have a question at this point or a comment?
Delegate. I do. Yes, um, yes, thank you so much. I'm curious as to whether there was any collaborative discussion between the administration and school system and the county executive office regarding this particular bill. Because I know that internally, the school system, they do have a process for facility juice, and I'm just, just curious if there was any type of collaboration.
Yeah, so there has been collaboration with the school system on this bill. What we're trying to do is have a coordinated system that works in addition with the school system with some of our other partners, like Maryland Capital Park and Planning.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Do we have testimony from our citizens? Delegate Charles?
We do. We have Richard Elliott. He has signed up to testify on this bill.
Delegate Charles, Councilmember Jay Davis from Greenbelt had a comment. Can she go before me and then I go thereafter? Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, she wrote in the chat. So if she wants to talk, she can talk. I'll mute really quick.
Just had a question. If this includes ball fields that are owned and maintained by municipalities?
Mr. Young, do you have an answer to that question?
What we'll do is that when we come back to actually hear this, that's something I'm going to have to ask council about, just to clarify whether the municipalities are included in, in, in this grouping or if this just includes the county fields and, and Capitol Park and Planning. And so we'll get back to that. And during your next public hearing, we'll definitely have an answer on that.
Thank you, because as you know, Greenbelt has several ball fields, and we try coordinating as best we can, but we have to be part of this. It may be a problem.
Thank, thank you. But what I'll add to that is that we'll probably try to have some conversations with Municipal Association on this as well, just to make sure that everyone's in the loop, especially for something like this, if we're looking to make it inclusive, that we'll see if it's in the best interest for everyone to be on the same system. But we'll definitely have an answer for your next public meeting.
Mr. Elliott?
Thank you, Delegate Proctor. Mr. Young, you and County Executive also Brooks have done an excellent job of explaining this bill and assuaging a lot of the concerns I had. The only point I want to add within is that as a graduate of Duba High School, I would really appreciate that within this legislation, if there were some adjustment to funding formula for said facilities based on some ratio involving student population, community usage, investment that's been allocated to facilities in the past and other, other such factors, so that as we do incorporate community usage, that we ensure that, that the funds are allocated to make sure that students are not having worsened facilities through community usage. I definitely appreciate the goal though, and I think this will be very helpful for a lot of rec leagues, a lot of other community groups, and I support this legislation. Thank you.
Delegate Charles, was anyone else signed up?
It looks like we have Ms. Terry Nurdin, who has something to add to the discussion as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Charles and Ms. Proctor. When we received the notice of this, the bill did not have any language in it. And so we researched the, the, the school website to see if there were indeed procedures in place. And we found it was a procedure 1330, as well as another one about the after-school use of facilities and grounds. And so we had questions about this bill and concern about its, its purpose. In terms of policy, what is the sincere purpose of this legislation? What financial and social impact will these actions have on taxpayers, students, and all community members? And is this applicable to P3 schools, non-P3 schools, charter schools, or any other designated type of school in Prince George's County? Of importance, if there is a problem with the current procedures for scheduling, we believe the community should be involved in defining the process. And we look forward to community engagement on this issue. We were told that South Lake would be used for games. We know that after-school facilities are used for other things than games. We also know that P3 schools intend to charge county residents for use. So all these things have to be clarified in the next round so that we can see exactly what is the intent of this legislation to take this authority from the school board and place it in a centralized situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Chairman Charles, that is, completes my bills on the Education Committee.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We are now going to move forward with the final committee bills, which is law enforcement, and we have two bills. I'm going to open the floor up for our chair for the Law Enforcement Committee, Delegate Mary Lehman. Delegate Lehman? I see her on. Delegate Lehman? All right, I'm not sure what's going on. She must be running into technical difficulties. Delegate Fisher, do you have the bills to read off as vice chair of the committee?
Sure. I don't have the bill title in front of me, but I can pull it up or have council to just read it off.
I'm able to read it if you'd like.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Council.
Sure. I'll go into the bill summary as well, if, if that's all right. So the title of the bill is Prince George's County Alcoholic Beverages Sunday Off Sale Permits. This is PG 30122. The bill is for the purpose of repealing a provision of law limiting the issuance by the Board of Licensed Commissioners for Prince George's County of certain Sunday off-sale permits to holders of a certain license acquired on or after a certain date. It also repeals the limit on the number of Sunday off-sale permits that may be in effect at any one time. And it also generally, generally relates to the Sunday off-sale of alcoholic beverage permits in the county.
Thank you. And any testimony or sign up, Mr. Chair, on this legislation?
Do we have anyone from Greg Holmes? I know he's signed up to testify on this, on this bill, Madam Chair. Mr. Holmes? Sounds like we don't have anybody here to testify on behalf of this bill. Do we have any questions from the delegation on this particular bill?
Oh, wait. Delegate Charles, I did, I thought you just mentioned specifically from his law firm. I did sign up to testify on this bill, and my comments will be quick.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Elliott.
Thank you, Delegate Charles. Thank you, Chair Charles. Comment is, we already had our tiff back and forth last session over liquor bills. I would love to know what the stated goal for the legislation is, in particular with the countywide, and I'd argue the state goal of reducing liquor density, particularly within the Bellway. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. I, I see we have Delegate Ann Hilli has her hand raised. Delegate Hilli?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wondered if there's anybody who signed up on this bill representing the industry or the businesses that would be affected. I just wondered if we, if there was any input from them. Does anybody know?
As of right now, there, I don't see anyone on the call, Delegate Hilli. But, but we definitely will be making sure that everyone is at the table for further discussion in regards to this bill, and Delegate Washington had to leave for something else. And so he won't be able to comment on the bill either right now.
Okay. We can wait for the work, work sessions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then I don't know if Chair Lehman is back and wants to take over, but we'll go on to the second bill for law enforcement at this time. Counsel, if you don't mind reading the bill for me, I'd appreciate it.
Title of the bill is Prince George's County Alcoholic Beverages Transfer of Class A Beer, Wine, and Liquor License, PG 3022. The bill authorizes the Board of Licensed Commissioners for the county, notwithstanding a certain prohibition on the transfer of a license with an off-sale privilege to approve the transfer of a Class A beer, wine, or liquor license to a, a premise. A premises located in a certain alcoholic beverages district if there is no Class A beer, wine, liquor license operating within a certain distance of the premises. The bill generally relates to alcoholic beverages licenses in the county.
Thank you. And I believe Delegate Lewis had to log off, so the county executive staff is going to, I know, testify on this legislation, so if I can call on them.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is Patrick Geller from the County Executive's Office. Delegate Lewis had to step off, but essentially this bill was an outburst of the bill last year that we had that Delegate Lewis introduced about the alcohol licenses. This bill is purely dealing with the density issue. It specifically, it's only allowing existing liquor store licenses to transfer into a different part of the county as with the only prohibition being that they cannot transfer to an area that's within a mile radius of an existing license.
Thank you, Patrick. Is there anyone else set to testify on this legislation? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Chair, I will send it back to you. I do know that there are a few pending bills for the Law Enforcement Subcommittee that hopefully will be heard on public hearing at a different time or a makeup public hearing, so I know it won't just be those two bills in that subcommittee. But I'm sure we'll present those at the appropriate time.
Would you like to discuss them at all, Delegate Fisher, before we close out the meeting?
No, I will. I can just briefly. I don't have the bill numbers, but I know there will be, my, the legislation that I'll be proposing, there'll be one that deals with a pilot program in the county for, as County Executive spoke earlier at the top of the meeting about a beer, beer and wine accessibility for grocery stores. And then there's other legislation as, as well. So I'm sure we'll have hearings for those, Mr. Chair, but I think the, the, the bill text on those were late. And so we have our makeup public hearing, and the public has access to the actual written legislation. It'll be more appropriate, but I appreciate that, the preamble, and we'll look forward to presenting that to the full delegation.
Thank you, Delegate Fisher. I, I do see we have one last question. I'm not sure who ACH is.
I'm sorry.
That's me, Delegate Harrison. Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to add that I am currently looking at the issue with the tobacco stores. And it may dovetail to 3022. We're actually, I'm, I'm actually in the process of doing some research. I'm working with legislative services right now on, on defining it, but as you know, that in our more densely, dense areas, the tobacco stores are just popping up all over the place, and I know that our residents and myself, just in general, we, you know, are concerned about the number of these stores that are just popping up, and a lot of times they'll say tobacco and grocery, but you know, the grocery is just like some potato chips and maybe, you know, a Rock Creek soda. Well, I'm sorry, most people probably don't know what Rock Creek soda is anymore, but you know what I'm saying. So anyway, we're looking at that right now and trying to see what we can do to curb the intensity of those establishments coming into our communities that are already adversely affected by the number of liquor stores, et cetera. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't know where it's going right now, but, or how far it's going to go, how we're going to make it work. But it is our intention, and I say our, at least the 24th Legislative District, our intention to try to curb some of that. So for the general public who's listening, just know that we're, we're working on it and hopefully we'll be able to to, to address that issue this session. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time out today, like I said earlier, for for taking the time out today, like I said earlier, for being here. See, Ms. Nurdin wants to add something else in, and that that will be the last comment and question before we close out. Ms. Nurdin, I'll let you go ahead and add add to the discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Charles and everyone listening. Somehow through the Zoom thing, we didn't get the comment period for the by-county bill, and I did have some comments to make for that particular section. In a perfect world, we would ask the Journal Assembly to seek legislation to resolve the commission by 2026. Was established in 27, by the 1927 by the Maryland Journal Assembly to practice long range planning and park acquisition and development in Prince George's County and Montgomery County. But perhaps these three proposals, PG MC 100, 101 and 103, shall taken together enable the appointed persons to be the sincere protectors of a human climate improvement plan and the biomass safety plan for the environment. Perhaps without influence from monetary or material gains, these individuals will uphold first and foremost the preservation of our Maryland earth when deciding upon development and land use policy, permit strategies and any other such work as appropriate within their jurisdiction. And maybe they shall also speak to and challenge attempts to circumvent the sincere work of protecting human life and biomass from destructive economic, public or private strategies. We ask, will they sincerely be able to execute such a charge for humanity? We hope so, and we ask these questions in light of the Prince George's Climate Plan. We ask this in in hope of the climate plan put forth by the Assembly that didn't get started. And so I close out with those concerns that if this commission does remain, that it has the authority to put land use and those types of decisions. The climate part of it up and is just as important. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Ms. Nurdin. And like I said, thank you. Thank you to everyone for taking the time to be with us tonight. Before we close out the meeting, I do want to at least let you all know if you want to participate. The delegation, as we are moving forward to the next session for Napolis, we are in the holiday season and the delegation, we are doing work across the county. The District 21 team is doing a food giveaway at Laurel High School December 18th from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. If you want to share that with your neighbors. And then on December 22nd, the entire delegation, we will be doing a holiday food giveaway at the University of Maryland Capital Region Medical Center, where we will be serving food to the hospital and to all of the workers. We'll be doing hot meals and groceries as well. And this is a partnership with both Food for Thought and Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. So you can mark this on your calendars, December 22nd, 2021. It's a holiday food giveaway and it's from 11:45 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. I'd like to thank you all for being here again, and I wish everyone a happy holiday. As we close out this meeting, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been moved and properly second. So we will close out this meeting and I will say once again, happy holidays to everyone in the Prince George's County House delegation. Take care, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.